June 12, 2019 Scarborough Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. I ask you to please join and rise in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do roll call. Karen Chu, here. James Hebert.
Here.
Rudy Karen.
Here.
David Bork.
Here.
Melinda Torrance. Absent. Okay. So first we have the approval of the minutes from the May 8, 2019 meeting. Did everyone get a chance to review the minutes? I don't know if anyone had any concerns, comments?
I have no questions.
Motion?
I'll move to approve the minutes from last month's meeting as presented.
Second?
Uh, question, does that include the findings of facts?
No, we're gonna do that separate.
Okay, thank you. Can I say it then?
Okay. Now, Mr. Karen, are you willing to vote in the minutes?
I'll abstain.
Okay, so I don't think we can approve. We don't really have three. All right, so.
We'll wait till next month?
Next month, yeah.
All right, so then we should be tabled the approval of the 243 Pine Point Road finding of facts.
I would bring up a point, though, that there are two typos on here. And I'd just like to make a motion to amend the minutes to correct the typos. And I'll tell you where they are. Uh, the first one's paragraph two, line six. In the middle of that line, the word she should not be there.
Is this the minutes?
No, it's in the, uh.
You mean the finding of facts?
Yeah.
The finding of facts.
Section six.
Yeah.
So that, uh.
Second paragraph, line six, the word she needs to be removed.
Second paragraph.
That's in the minutes. That's the minutes, that's not the.
That's why I asked whether that's included in the minutes.
This is the decision, that's what I thought you were talking about.
Okay, all right.
Okay. So the minutes need to be.
So the minutes need to be amended to show that.
So, okay.
That the word she should be omitted. And the second one.
Oh, I already got those earlier. I noticed them.
All right, well, just, just to make sure.
There's three.
The second one is in paragraph three, line four. B O A R, it should be board. Okay, no, that's all I had, thank you.
Yep. I read them.
Okay, so we'll, we'll hold those for the next meeting.
Yep. All right, so we only have one appeal tonight. Appeal number 2660, which is a limited reduction of side yard by Driftwood at Higgins LLC, which is eight Ocean Ave. Assessors map U 002 lot 106. And we have, center, please. Good question.
I don't, I don't know if the mics are on or not, I'm not sure. Can we have somebody from the tech room check mics?
They're all on.
They're all on?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So first I'm actually gonna ask Brian to introduce the appeal and give us a little background information from the town here.
Okay, so the, um, this is, as you said, a limited reduction of yard size variance. We received the application last month. There was some technical issues that hadn't been discovered before. The applicant has since revised the plan and it's what you're looking at tonight. A limited reduction of yard size variance, as you may recall, is available to those properties that were in existence as of July 3, 1991. And it will allow the applicant to apply for up to a five-foot reduction on side and rear yard setbacks, as well as a 10-foot reduction on front yard setbacks. What you're going to hear Mr. Wilson describe tonight is a remodel or a renovation project, as well as a small addition or a moderate-sized addition to the rear of the structure with a side wing added to that. And there are some other components that he will describe to you.
Okay.
Okay. I'm Walter Wilson from Design Company. I'm representing Denise and Michael Stern in the application to the zoning board for these two limited reduction of yard size variances. The owner has proposed to renovate the existing structure and add a rear addition. And the existing building is a two-story residence with, which was constructed in 1935. And the rear addition will also be two stories. The ridgeline height will be the same elevation as the existing building in accordance with the CDCR1 character code limitations. The existing building is located approximately eight feet from the easterly property line. And the existing second-floor knee wall is four foot two inches high and a pitched roof rests on that top plate of that wall. Currently, this wall does not have any windows due to the limited wall height. So we're proposing the placement of two gable dormers to be located on that sidewall. The dormers will allow for the installation of windows that will satisfy the building code requirements to egress. Article four, section E 74 in the CDCR1 character code states that the dormer must be set back at least 12 feet from the vertical plane of all side lot lines regardless of the setback of the building. In order to install an egress compliant window, the face of the proposed dormer wall will have to be located on the plane of the existing wall below. The existing building setback is approximately eight feet to the property line and this will result in the need for the variance to install the dormers. The second variance we're looking for is on the rear addition, a first-floor fireplace on the westerly sidewall. The fireplace extends two feet from the building wall. Due to the property line angle, the fireplace will extend into the eight-foot setback and the variance is requested. The two variances are, the variance number one for the dormers, required 12-foot setback, proposed eight-foot. So we need a reduction of four feet in order to put the dormers in. And the variance for the fireplace, the setbacks required eight feet. And the proposed fireplace will be six foot four inches from the line. We're requesting a one-foot eight-inch variance. So that's the two things we're looking for.
All right. Sounds good. I don't know if the board has any questions right away, but I'm gonna dive into the criteria here.
Sure.
Okay. Number one, the existing building or structure on the lot for which the limited reduction of yard size residential is requested was erected prior to July 3, 1991, or the lot was vacant, non-conforming lot of record.
According to the assessors' records, the existing building was constructed in 1935.
Number two, the requested reduction is reasonably necessary to permit the owner or occupant of the property to use and enjoy the property in essentially the same manner as other similar properties are utilized in the zoning district.
The requested variance for the second-floor dormer, variance one, is necessary in order to satisfy the building code requirements for egress windows and bedrooms. The requested variance for the fireplace, number, uh, variance two, is necessary for the construction of an exterior wall fireplace, which requires a projection of two foot to accommodate the firebox and the vertical flue going up to the roof. Each reduction request is reasonably necessary to permit the owner of the property to use and enjoy the property and to satisfy the building codes.
Okay. Number three, due to the physical features of the lot and or location of the existing structures on the lot, it would not be practical to construct the proposed expansion, enlargement, or new structure in conformance with the currently applicable yard size requirements.
Variance one, which is the dormers, due to the location of the existing building on the lot, the proposed dormers cannot be built in conformance with the required setback of 12 feet that is specified in the character ordinance in order to get the egress windows installed. Variance two, the construction of an exterior wall fireplace requires a masonry projection from the face of the wall of two feet in order to install the wood-burning firebox and the vertical flue. The building wall exceeds the required eight-foot setback. However, the masonry work will be within the eight-foot setback.
Okay. Number four, the impacts and effects of the enlargement, expansion, or new building or structure on the existing uses in the neighborhood will not be substantially different from or greater than the impacts and effects of a building or structure which conforms to the yard size requirement.
The requested variances will not be substantially different from or greater than the impacts and effects of a building or structure which conforms to the yard size requirement. The dormers are a typical component of many of the properties in the CDCR1 zone. An exterior masonry fireplace is a common in the district.
Number five, the applicant has not commenced construction of the enlargement, expansion, building, or structure for which the limited reduction in yard size is required so that the Board of Appeals is not considering an after-the-fact application.
No construction is, Ms. Otter.
Okay. Straightforward. I don't know if the board has any questions at this moment?
I guess the only feasible location for the vertical flue is on the exterior of the house. You couldn't do it inside?
No, because the space that we have to work with on the second floor of the expanded area is limited in size. There's no room to put the flue in the chimney in the fireplace in the middle of the addition without completely compromising the floor space of the addition.
Okay.
Right, and my understanding is you've reworked this whole plan to try to come into more conformance. And so this is kind of, what was left here was the fireplace budding out. Uh huh.
I have a further question regarding the fireplace. Would it not be practical to have a natural gas or propane fireplace?
That was one of the options I proposed to the client and the client said, "We are intent on having a wood-burning fireplace and do not want a gas fireplace."
And would a gas fireplace, whether it be natural or propane, require a brick, uh, a masonry, I should say, structure on the outside?
It would require a bump out on the outside. Typically, they're between nine and 12 inches on the bump out.
Right.
In order to get it to fit. That in itself would also put it slightly over the setback line in order to do that. So either way, we'd be in for the, for a variance approval on it because of the setback line.
Is there any way the building could? No, sorry.
That was a possibility, the owner said no.
Would it be possible to, uh, limit the size of the expansion in order to stay within the required eight-foot setback using a natural gas or propane, uh, flue, whatever it's called, coming out of that wall?
Well, like I said, there is not a whole lot of room in this expansion to do those things. And if we shorten that addition up, the extra foot or whatever it's gonna take to do it, the size of the room is such that every foot is, you know, not wanted to be given up.
And as you said, the owners are insisting it be a masonry fireplace?
Like, one thing I wanna make sure, the building itself meets the setback. The frame of the building.
I understand that.
It's just the fireplace that doesn't.
I understand. I just wanna make sure I understand what is being requested here and why. Okay?
Well, let's put it this way. If I pull the wall back for the fireplace, it not only pulls back the size of the sitting room, it also reduces the size of the screen porch. And subsequently, on the second floor, it reduces the space on the second floor for the bathroom. So the, uh, it's not just a simple few inches that we're gonna save or gonna lose footage in three different rooms to do that.
But if it were a natural gas or propane, it wouldn't be as much of a.
It wouldn't stick out two feet, it would stick out between 10 and 12 inches.
Got it, thank you.
Which you still have to have the variance for.
I understand.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I don't really have any. I'm gonna open it up to the public. If anyone has anything they'd like to say at this time. And I'll close it to the public.
There were no letters or written down?
Sorry. So there were no letters, no emails, no phone calls in regards to this? That's good. So now we're gonna go through the criteria here with the board and discuss them. Finding some facts, let's find some conclusions here. So we have number one, the existing building or structure on the lot for which the limited reduction of yard size is required was erected prior to July 3, 1991. So far, the applicant has stated that the town records indicate that this is in fact true. Mr. Hebert?
I concur. He's provided the information that the assessor's office records indicates it was constructed in 1935.
Madam Chair, I brought up the assessor's record in front of you now on the screen.
Perfect.
Year built, 1935.
There you go.
Yeah, no, no further comments, thank you.
No further.
Okay. All in favor of number one being met? Number two, the requested reduction is reasonably necessary to permit the owner or occupant of the property to use and enjoy the property in essentially the same manner as other similar properties are utilized in the zoning district. So as the applicant already said, you know, it's not unreasonable for people to wanna have dormers or windows on the side of their house and, um, and to have a wood-burning fireplace. That might not be what I want at my house right now, but that's what these people want and that's what a lot of people have. Mr. Hebert?
I'll say the applicant's reference building code requirements to have means of egress out the second floor, which the dormers will provide. And as discussed earlier, natural gas, propane versus fireplace, you'd still have to come for us with, for variance, excuse me, for a limited reduction in yard size. So, and the difference between the two is inches. So I don't really see an issue with this one being met.
Should we be addressing each variance separately? I'm not sure if the board wants to, or Brian, Mr. wants to. Should we, I feel like, I do feel like we should break them down? I would like the board to pick it.
I think we should.
You should? Okay.
Perhaps start with the dormer and then go back and do the same thing with the fireplace?
Perfect. Let's go through and just comment.
But rather than backtrack through, take them A and B, each, each one.
Yeah, so just comment on each one, if you can.
Uh, and separately in each one. Again, I don't see an issue with adding the dormers on this. Again, as stated, building code requirements, means of egress, that's fine. With regard to the fireplace, variance number two, again, as I stated, we're talking inches, whether or not it's, you know, gas, propane, or, uh, or an actual fireplace. So I don't see, uh, with this sort of distance, we're not, you know, we're sort of splitting hairs here, so I don't have an issue with this one.
All right, so, uh, in regard to the first part of it, which is the dormers, I see that as being essential, given the fact that codes require egress. And because of that, it does make sense, you know, to have these dormers installed. And in addition to that, the dormers are certainly with a character of the neighborhood. But the key factor for me is, uh, is egress. As far as the second one, fireplace, that's strictly a want issue as opposed to necessary to permit the owner or occupant of the property to use and enjoy the property. I don't really see that as being something that's necessary in any way. And, uh, you know, I would be concerned that, you know, it doesn't really necessarily meet the criteria that we're looking for.
Mr. Karen?
With regard to the requests for the variance one and the dormers, I agree that the egress for these proposed bedrooms is a necessity and does fit within the existing character of the neighborhood. For the variance two, which would be the extension for the fireplace masonry buildout, I do feel that it would be reasonably necessary to permit the owner to use the property and enjoy it in essentially the same manner in that regardless of the type of flue or fuel, similar variance may be required in its current proposed design.
Okay. I agree, you know, the dormers, the egress is necessary. They're trying to be in conformance with the code requirements in regards to the fireplace, you know. I think they have, it's main. I think everyone wants that fireplace and it's not, I think it's reasonably necessary and it's essential to most miners and not unreasonable for them to want that fireplace. All in favor of number two being met? Oh, sorry.
No.
Two A?
Hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, two A being met in regards to the dormers. So we're gonna vote in favor of that?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
And then two B in regards to the fireplace. Do we have three and then against?
No.
Okay. Number three, due to the physical features of the lot and or the location of the existing structure on the lot, it would not be practical to construct the proposed expansion, enlargement, or new structure in conformance with the currently applicable yard size requirements. We discussed the dormers, the building is already there. There's not really many options. They're trying to be in conformance. So that doesn't seem, that has been met in regards to the fireplace. Again, I think we went through and we said that this application, he actually came last month and he did a lot of reworking. And, um, they've tried to rearrange it to, I think, come into conformance as much as they can when it comes to the fireplace. Mr. Hebert?
With regard to variance one, the dormers, again, the, uh, the applicant has stated that just due to the location of the existing building on the lot, and this is the case for most, if not all, the other buildings in this zone, that it, above all else, egress and life safety is sort of the prime, the number one consideration when building expansions and renovations to these buildings. So the fact that this is coming, um, this is gonna be meeting code requirements for egress, I don't see an issue with this one, variance one. For variance two, with the construction of exterior fireplace, regardless if it were, as Mr. Karen said, if it were propane, if it were natural gas or wood, you most likely, may most likely have to come before us anyways, regardless for a variance. So I don't see an issue with this one either.
Regarding the dormer, this is already a non-conforming setback on the building itself and it falls within the lines of that wall. Therefore, I really don't see any issue. And this is the only practical way of putting a egress, a method of egress sufficient, you know, to, you know, to afford to be safe. So to me, that makes perfect sense. This is the most practical way of accomplishing the egress portion of it. So I think that one certainly does make sense. The, uh, the second one, again, I just fall back on the issue of, I don't really believe that a fireplace is needed. This is more of a want and I really. This is more of a want and I really, I just can't agree with the necessity for having this. As a, as a point of issuing a variance, a variance should only be issued when there are substantial reasons for doing so. And in most cases, we should be saying no to request for variances or that does not exist. So I'm not in favor of that.
With regard to the first variance, as others before may have already spoken, due to the existing nature of the building and its location, the location of the proposed dormers makes the most sense for the proposed bedrooms and egress access. With regard to the variance number two, the fireplace flu buildout, it would seem, as you've mentioned, that there are other possibilities for the existing site, whether the client is in favor of them or not. So with that being said, it is possible for other, other designs, I'd say.
So, you know, I agree with the board on three with the dormers. You know, the structure's already existing. It's there. Need the windows. In regards to the fireplace, you know, I understand that you've been working with the town to try to come in conformance as much as you can. You know, you're already restricted with a building that is nonconformance. So I think you guys are working with the best you can. All in favor of three, one in regards to the dormers being met? All in favor of three, two in regards to the fireplace being met? Number four, the impact and effects of the enlargement, expansion, or new building or structure on the existing uses in the neighborhood will not be substantially different from or greater than the impacts and effects of a building or structure which conform to the yard size requirements. I don't think putting dormers on the side of an existing structure is gonna have any effect on the neighborhood. It would be substantially different. Then they're trying to bring a mark to code and come into the hickens conformance there. And I feel the same way in regards to the fireplace. Maybe it ain't any different than any other building having a fireplace. Right, yard size requirements. Mr. Hebert?
I don't think, with regard to, again, regarding to the dormers, I don't think the impacts of this enlargement would be substantially different from any other building in the area or the neighborhood. Again, other buildings have dormers and this one requires it due to code. So I don't see an issue there. With regard to the fireplace, there are other, there are other homes in the area with fireplaces and chimneys and flues and I don't think this is out of character or be substantially different or greater, have a greater impact on the area than other homes in that space.
Okay. For this particular criterion, we're looking at whether or not it's in character or not with the neighborhood and certainly for both the dormer as well as for the fireplace, it is within character. So I would say yes to both.
For the first variance, the dormers, I agree that it is within character of the existing neighborhood. And as Mr. Hebert said, for variance number two, fireplace chimney is also within the given character of the neighborhood. I see no issues with either.
Great. Okay. All in favor of four, one in regards to the dormers being met? All in favor of four, two in regards to the fireplace being met? Okay. Number five, the applicant has not commenced construction of the enlargement, expansion, building, or structure for which the limited reduction in yard size is requested so that the Board of Appeals is not considering it after the fact application. The applicant has already expressed that he has not begun construction on the dormers or the fireplace.
I agree. I have nothing to add to this one. It's pretty straightforward.
I have no personal knowledge. I'll defer to what, to Jeff regarding whether or not this, Brian, excuse me, whether or not this is commenced.
Madam Chair, I can concur or verify rather that the construction hasn't started. The applicant has submitted plans for administrative review, which we have completed and it does pass the administrative review phase, but it, construction has not started.
No further comment?
Okay. So I'm not gonna break down number five. I'm just gonna say all in favor of number five being met. So should we do a, I guess we should do a separate vote overall, first on the dormers and then on the fireplace, if I imagine?
Yes.
So all in favor of the application for the dormer, limited reduction of yard size? All in favor? That's four. And then all in favor of the two fireplace application requests? That's two, against?
Against.
Against.
Against. Pardon me. Sorry.
Yep.
I'm hard of hearing.
So a tie fails. That's how that goes in this. So I've never broken down an appeal sort of this way.
I think that the board created a very difficult situation for itself. I think it was wrong to take the two things separately, but that's just my opinion. I think you've created, you've created a problematic thing.
Um, well...
Because, well, and I only say that because, does the board think that no kind of heating appliance should be, should go in that structure? Is that what the board's instruction to Mr. Wilson is going to be? To instruct his client that no, no appliance on that side of the dwelling should be installed?
My interpretation here, some of the board members look at these plans a little bit more closely than I may do and I think they're looking at some of the layout and saying, you know, why can't you push it in? You know, I understand that you're working a lot with the town and with your clients as well. You are trying to come in conformance. You know, I think it would have been my preference to just vote on this wholly. I do not think any of this is unreasonable. I don't think it's unreasonable to have a fireplace. But I can see the pushback from some of the board members in regards to the fireplace and as to why. I'm not really quite sure where to go from here. I, my preference would be to vote altogether.
I mean, technically, there hasn't been a motion to approve the appeal.
Just to go back from my understanding clarification, is there a reason why it was submitted with two separate variances separated?
It really wasn't. It's one variance. You chose to break it into two separate variances. That's why I think it's problematic. There are two components to the single variance.
Variance number one, variance number two.
You chose to discuss, the board chose to discuss each component separately. That's, that's all I'm pointing out. And I think finding, in the finding of fact, it was brought up that if the board chose to say, okay, the masonry fireplace, too much, go to a gas fireplace, it's still going to come back to the board for a limited reduction. So you've created this sort of circular
Right.
situation. That's why I ask, is the board actually willing to say no appliance that projects out from the building? Is that what the board is telling Mr. Wilson that he must go back and tell his clients? Because that's what it's gonna end up resulting. I, I don't care one way or the other. I'm pointing this out.
You know, I don't find this whole application unreasonable. I understand the board's pushback in regards to the fireplace, but I think in the whole picture, you know, they're trying to make this property better and more conformance with the properties around it. I think there's really nothing wrong with the fireplace. I sort of feel like we should take a step back and do a vote on this application as one whole. Like Mr. Hebert just said, we haven't had a motion to approve this or deny it yet. I'm not sure. Mr. Hebert, what are you thinking?
If I can add just one thing real quick, you know, it's generally the board's governed by Robert's Rules of Order. We make motions on things and that's considered the actual findings of fact and conclusions of losses. There was no official motion on this. We're sort of doing straw polls between each one of these just to get, sort of take a pulse on what everyone is, which we've done in the past. There wasn't an official motion on this appeal. So I, personally, I would propose that we make a motion, as we have done for all of our applications, to do it together as is presented and then discuss and go from there.
I do have a just a question regarding the proper structure of it all. Should we make the motion and vote as one combined as is presented? Is it possible to, is it possible to make a second motion afterwards with amendments?
You can make amendments to the, to the motion.
To the first motion only?
Yeah. So you would, you would make a motion to approve the application as presented. Someone seconds it and then it goes into a discussion. But then at that point, you can make amendments to it. I amend to do this. I meant to do that. And then everybody votes on it at the end.
Thank you.
I see a problem here. And that is that according to town code, you know, and case law, if any of the criteria fail, that, that means the entire appeal fails, any single one. And so you certainly have that situation here. We made the decision to separate them based on a recommendation from staff and...
I didn't, excuse me, I did not recommend that you separate them.
Well, I understand. Corrected then.
Yeah.
I seem to recall a memo in which it's suggested that we look at each one separate. I may be wrong.
Each criteria, but not each component of the variance.
But we, if we, if any single part of it fails, then we need to, it can't pass. You know, and in effect, doing a final vote is really redundant and is prone to error. If we were to pass on a final and any of the individual ones failed, then that's, that would certainly be subject to an appeal by somebody.
You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interpret the breakdown loosely. You know, I think we, we had a subset that unfortunately, because of the quorum that we have today, because of that, one subsection of one qualification, the board felt, did not meet the requirements. I do not think that, again, we're looking at this as one application altogether and we're voting on them individually, which doesn't actually affect, I think, the final vote. My inclination and what I'm going to do at this point is to make a motion to appeal the, to, to approve the whole application as presented as one. But I can't make a motion.
You will entertain such a motion now?
Yes. Thank you. I will entertain that motion at this time.
And I will say, oh, so moved. And then I give you a second. In order, yeah, so in order, so I'll say as a clarification for Robert's rules, you know, seconding it, going into the discussion now, now is the chance if you want to vote it down or vote it in. But it still has to be seconded to go to the step.
Did you second, Mr. Karen?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Thank you.
If I can add a comment with this, I mean, with regard to the, you know, the needs and wants of fireplace versus gas or propane, the applicant stated that without providing an exterior, this exterior fireplace as presented, it would reduce the footprint size of the expansion that they have on this building. It would potentially compromise the second floor and just sort of the structural layout, from my understanding. So again, trying to do, the amount of work involved and to relocate this elsewhere, I guess what I'm trying to say is I don't see a large issue with them asking for this because they're gonna have to come back for a request anyways for this setback, if it's with a gas or propane, regardless if it's wood fired or not. And we're talking inches. That's just my point.
I'd like to make a further point and really this is also a question to staff. If I'm not mistaken, when you're using natural gas or propane, you don't necessarily have to vent directly through a side wall. It can be vented straight up, you know, with proper construction materials. I see this all the time with heaters, you know, gas heaters, whatever. They go straight up, you know, you know, through a, an interior wall and then out through a roof. Is this true?
I mean, I don't think we should be breaking down sort of the structure and things like that. I think we need to consider the application in front of us and we need to decide individually as a board if you personally feel like they've met the requirements or not. I mean, we definitely cannot be sitting here redesigning their plan. Either you want to approve the plan as it's presented.
No, I'm just simply seeing if there's an alternative, you know, for the applicant.
So I don't think it's unreasonable.
I'll say respectfully, like, I see where you're coming from and we've come across this before in the past, but we can't, we can't dictate design. We can only give recommendations. And we can only vote on and discuss what is presented in front of us. Unfortunately, we're not able to go into different variations of this.
And that's really what I was trying to explore, you know, what would be appropriate, okay, you know, for taking this forward. So let's rule that out.
Correct. Yeah.
All right. Good. So if we were to proceed then, and again, we're just in discussion stages on this, you know, the motion, if we were to proceed with a, with just one appeal, then we could always put conditions on it or amend it as we go along to, you know, to deal with these things as separate components, I would think. So, you know, to the chair, I would ask, is that, would that be in order?
To break down the application?
Well, to make, to make that either a conditional approval or to, to put, you know, to just put additional stipulations on this with approval.
I'm not sure what stipulations you want to put on it.
All right. The, okay, what I'm looking at specifically is to be able to say yes to the, the dormer, okay? But at the same time, you know, being able to say no to the, you know, to the, you know, the outside masonry fireplace. Because that seems to be where we're stuck right now. And I'm just trying, I'm just trying to find a way to, you know, to get this resolved in a reasonable way.
Yeah. And again, you know, the applicant already did come before us and worked with the town. Their application was tabled and this was sort of the plan that they came up with the best they could to work with the constraints that they had. I do not see anything wrong with the application that has been presented before us at this time after hearing the discussions we've had. I think it would be a disservice to, you know, the applicants and our town residents and taxpayers to kind of bump this back over heating and maybe what could be a foot between a natural fireplace, gas, natural wood, things like that. I'm not sure if anyone has anything else to say.
I'd just add a couple of comments from my side. The way I'm seeing it is, the way I interpret the plans and today's proposal isn't as much of a concern of the type of heating fuel, whether natural gas or the masonry. It's the fact it's a new addition, at which point the setbacks and sightlines and all of the site constraints would have had to been present to begin with. And to have worded the proposal today or variance in section, or in a manner that's as presented, I think there may have been some awareness to the, to conditions that are being presented in front of the board. I find it personally difficult to accept the request for a variance when that isn't as necessary, given this is a new addition. And also I can hear some additional verification or justification as to why it's located where it is with relation to the edge of the property boundary and the adjacent property beyond the client's concern of losing a foot on the first and second floor.
I mean, I think it's a good point, from, again, from my, from my point of view, respectfully, we're, we're talking about inches generally, but it's, I guess it is what it is, so. I guess at this point, do we, do we just, do we vote since we are in the motion?
What are we voting on, is there, are we...
Well, right now, we're in the motion to approve appeal number 2660 as presented.
Madam Chair, can I make an observation?
Yes.
I guess you're dealing with, is it going to be one vote for both of these things or two votes individually? If you look at the application I submitted, I asked for two separate yard reductions, and I laid it out as a variance one and a variance two. So I wasn't presenting just one overall picture for a vote, I was presenting it as two separate limited yard reductions. So my application has it as two separate ones.
Okay.
And my feeling is, if you lump them together, the whole thing may die because of the two-two vote on the, and then that's going to stall the whole process going forward for at least another, another meeting or maybe two, whereas if they were dealt with separately, at least the building itself could be looked at as approved variance and then the second variance for the fireplace, if it ends up in two-two, I'd have to deal with that some other way.
Right, okay, I really appreciate that.
If I may make a suggestion?
Yes.
So since we're in this motion right now, we can make an amendment to the motion to state that it's only regard to variance one that's in this application.
I second that.
Great. So I guess as, as that is presented, so this motion for the appeal, the approval of 2660, variance one, we'll state those in the application. And you're seconding that?
I am.
Okay.
Are you also going to make a motion with variance two?
We'll have to make a, so right now, we're on variance one, so we'll vote on variance one?
Just a technical point, I understand breaking them out and, but technically it should have been two applications, not one. You can't, you can't submit one application and have multiple phases because this is what you get.
Okay, so I think, we can work with that, no? Because I think what we can do...
I do remember years ago, on one job, I came in with 21 variances on one application.
No, I think, Mr. Hebert, what we can do is, can't we just have a motion and say to approve variance one?
Yes.
As presented.
It's already assigned a number, and this could be A, part A, you know, like that, so, no, we could subdivide it.
Correct, so. So I will, I will, I will, so like you can't make a motion with a motion, but so I would like to amend the current motion to state that I move to approve appeal number 2660, variance one, the dormer is on the eastern side of this building.
And I will second that.
Does anyone, I guess, anyone have any issue with that? Considering where we are now, that's sort of the best way out of this, since it's sort of the straightforward application.
Do we need to say in the motion that we're not passing variance two?
Oh, we'll make a separate motion. Yeah, there'll be a second motion.
Okay, so, all in favor of motion?
All in favor of the current motion, yeah, so.
Yes.
Okay, so that's variance A, so I will move to approve appeal number 2660B, variance number two as presented, this is the fireplace on the westerly side.
I'll second.
Second. So now we're in this one, this is the motion for, I'll say part B of 2660.
Okay, all in favor? And all against?
Okay.
And I believe that is our decision. I think we got there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for working with us.
That, that helped quite a bit, Mr. Wilson, thank you.
So we had a new, I guess, an alternate appointed, a new alternate appointed, and so hopefully he will be here and joining us next month, so we won't have more issues anymore.
Great.
I don't know if anyone has any comments, concerns, general issues?
I do just a general procedural issue really, and this regards to the final overall vote, okay, and getting back to the issue of when you have a, you know, split decisions, where some of the individual criteria are approved, but maybe one or more that's not approved, as we had in our last meeting, okay? It's possible to, to have a different outcome on the final vote than what really, you know, took place on the individual votes. And in fact, you know, the board could very easily on the final vote, vote against something for and in favor either way, you know, that technically was just the opposite on the individual because in order for it to be approved, everything has to be approved, each of the individual criteria and the standards, building standards have to be approved in order for it to be passed. So it might be more in order going forward for the chair to entertain a motion, let's say in a case where it was not all approved, right, and that was the case last time.
Right.
Instead of entertaining a motion to approve, it really might be more appropriate to entertain a motion to deny and event to vote on that, because that's really where it's at, and that would be more, I would think that would be more consistent with the individual votes. So I think that's something we should think about.
Yeah, no, it's definitely something to think about, for sure.
Yeah.
I think some, you know, it's, it's hard to get very technical up here because then I think sometimes the applicants and people get a little confused, and I think it is sort of our job to be trained and to already know those things.
Yeah, what happened last time, we were in a different room and, you know, we, I couldn't hear what was going on most of the time.
Yeah.
I couldn't keep track of the danger posts, and it was more difficult. Here, the acoustics in this room is better.
Right.
So, yeah, I think that was part of the problem, me personally. Yeah, I'm hard of hearing anyway, so, yeah. I just spent some time thinking about that, it just, I just want to make sure we don't err to the point where we may be sued to the main judicial spirit or by a party either, you know, the, the, the person who appealed or somebody who didn't agree with that, you know, it could be appealed very easily if we were inconsistent in any way. So I think we just have to, what do we do, we just have to be very, you know, enter on the, on the side of caution and make sure that we don't reverse ourselves.
I'll, to add to that though, I'll say, you know, making a motion to deny an application, if you vote, if you vote down the motion to deny something, you're not, you don't get anywhere. So you say, okay, we're not going to deny it.
Yeah.
But also, we're not, that doesn't necessarily mean you're approving it either, so you still have to make a motion to approve it. So ultimately, you're going to have, you have to have a motion to approve it, because the approval of a motion sets them forward in their direction, or it doesn't. A motion to deny it, it stops them where they are, but when you disprove the denial, it doesn't necessarily mean that they can go forward, I'd say technically, speaking like the parliamentary procedure of it. I think maybe in the future, when we come across, you know, multiple variances in one packet, maybe we address it at the very beginning and say, you know, we're going to consider this as one entire package, or we're going to consider this as separate. That way we can avoid that next time. It's my two cents.
I certainly see your point about questions have to be affirmed if they are the negative.
Right.
That makes all sense and that is consistent with the Roberts Rule, so that makes sense. But again, I think that we have a complex vote, especially where we're voting on two different things. Like last time, we were voting on individual criteria and we were also looking at performance standards, took seven votes on that. We could somehow, sometimes get lost in detail, so I think it's probably coming upon the chair to summarize, you know, before we go into final vote, just to say, okay, here's where we voted on the individual.
Right.
And then we entertain a motion to approve, as you will, and then we can make sure we're consistent. It was just, just covering ourselves.
Right.
Yeah.
For sure. Anyone else, anything, Mr. Wilson? Have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned. During, should we keep the minutes in finding facts?
One sec, Madam Chair.
The bridge decision.
Madam Chair, light's still on.
It probably shines.
Okay.